Labor team and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May be seated. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask the recorder treasurer to call the row.
Barnes?
Here.
Hastings?
Here.
Crystal?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
In front of you is your agenda. I approve a motion to second to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Along with that, in front of you have the minutes for the August 8th meeting and also the monthly financials. I'll entertain a motion to second to approve those as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brings us down to department head reports. First one is Airport Commission. I know we're meeting tomorrow. I'm sorry, Monday, we'll have that. I had on your information on handout I'd given you earlier in the week that I think Chad is working on response to the lease for Dawson Aircraft for the hangar. I think Eddie sent him something. You responded and you're waiting, maybe get back. That's ongoing?
We've exchanged versions of the lease. Called Eddie today. He was unavailable, but we'll talk about it.
Okay. As that unfolds, we already have that wrapped up, I hope, by the next meeting. That's all I've got on the airport. Under Animal Control reauthorization, well, this you called earlier today, you're not going to be able to make it. You might have the report. I'll read it to you. Currently have 22 dogs and 16 cats and two litters of kittens. We have adopted out two dogs and one cat. When we make the transition to almost home rescue center, we'll have other facilities and more resources to get homes for our animals. So they're still working on that. We already been making phone calls and sending out some emails to other facilities and they're aware of our transition plans for the future, which is good. Big event this Saturday, the 14th. They'll be at the Van Buren County Fire Expo, which is down in the city park this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00. You're invited to stop in and check them out, maybe a adopted dog or a cat or two of them. But they're doing half-price adoptions for all this month and they felt that helped us to get maybe some of their dogs and cat. And still, other adopters are paying something. And I believe everybody's adopting animal, you know, could pay something, so she's at half price. So there are responsible adopters out there and they've been already helped financially to get that down to half price. So she had made that point. Also, I'm still working on what's legal and not when they make that transition. Same thing with Eddie. I'm kind of piggybacking that when you get with him on the airport. I want to talk to him about that trust and get that moved over to whoever it goes to. If they got, if they're piggybacking over a 501(c)(3), can it go to them or not? Just kind of waiting to hear from that. And I'm sure Crystal Cooley would be glad to get that done, too. And that's about where I'm at.
Do we know where they're at on the 501(c)(3)?
What's that?
Do we know where they're at on the 501(c)(3)?
No. I think they have to get them, probably have to get an attorney involved, other than ours, you know, an independent one on that. But they've done a lot of legwork, you know. She's been pretty busy the last three weeks. It's gotten busy and tell by adoption. They do a great job. It's a hard-working family and they're very happy. It's just...
They brought paperwork that they've incorporated under the Arkansas, as an Arkansas nonprofit corporation. They just haven't gone through that 501(c)(3), which is an IRS issue. We've done it a couple times. It's actually hard to find local attorneys that want to do it because the process is not really easy and pretty time-consuming. So I'm not sure if they've found somebody or not. But it takes a while to get 501(c)(3) certified, so.
We can do all the other stuff. Get ready for it. So we're, you know, still doing the job downtown. I appreciate them for that. Anything on that? Brings us to Fire Department Report Chief DL Webb.
In the last month, we've been pretty busy. We've had two grass fires. We've had one vehicle fire. We've lift assist for survival flight twice this month. We did have a motor vehicle accident that we helped take care of. And then we've done three public service, like going to the library to show the fire truck to the kids, things like that. Everything's going fine on the Fire Department. The new building, it's going up. If you hadn't been out there, they're not started on erecting the building yet, but they are working on the lines for water, sewer. So it's getting closer every day. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Oh, I did approve a change order. I would mention that. It was for, apparently on the highway, state highway there, there was two culverts and I think one was undersized. Talked to Tabby Richards and back-and-forth DL now for 20 minutes, but it looked like it was something that unavoidable. I don't know who's...
We had tried to save money by using the two existing driveways that's already there without having to do anything with them. And then when they pulled the head walls off, they seen that one was a little small for what it was supposed to be over all these years. And the other one was, I think the metal was starting to rot, decay. So they wanted to put two new ones in. So that was never factored into our original budget for it, but it was something that ended up having to happen. Hopefully, we will gain that back as we go. Because like I said...
Things. It was $11,000. I'll let you aware of that, but it's a...
The light poles that go around the building, the lights there, we've already been able to take two of those out because the luminos are still going to be bright enough that we, so there's going to be a little bit of savings there. So we're hoping it all works out in the end. I did forget, but you mentioned it is the Fire Expo is Saturday. So you've already mentioned that.
Yeah. They do a good job. They support that. I think it'll be dry by then. Glad to get the water, though. Anything else for Chief Webb? That's all I have. Thank you. Brings us down to Parks Report. Charles Wilson.
Dial up a whole lot at the parks. Everything's going pretty good down there. I think they ended up the co-ed softball thing this weekend. So like I said, the only thing going on I know of is Fire Expo down there, so.
What's the archery thing? That's some time time...
Friday.
This week?
Friday or Saturday?
Tomorrow.
I think it's tomorrow, 5:30 to 7:30, I thought, on the game of fish with that.
That same bunch, I think, is going to do it at the Moonshine Festival, so might be a good time to go down there. And they're pretty self-contained. They can take care of that. They've got all their stuff.
They'd probably get more people if they did it on a Saturday. All the kids would be at school, so, yeah, they could probably get a lot more youth entertained into it, but.
When they go down there.
Yeah.
I also had a note here under Parks. I did hear from Trey Foster. He reached out to me. I'm going to try to move it on the next week or by the 27th at the latest, kind of walk that sidewalk project out again, see what our bottom line is. I'll come back to you guys next month on that and give you the bottom line to put the sidewalk in from the fountain all the way up to 65 and all the way from the skate park up to McDonald's. I think that was originally coming around 40, 38, 40. I think we're still right there. Also, another sidewalk under the overpass that goes up to where the pollinator meadow is. So a lot of people use that. Steve Baum's more than happy to allow us to put sidewalk there, so that was not a problem. So I'll get you the bottom line on that next meeting. We looked at number four ball field with Craig Clute up there at the schools. The school has ball field. He'd been working on that a lot. We're going to have to, city's got to play on that field. I don't know if it's 10 and under, 12, and I can't remember, but we don't have field three anymore. So I think we'll be able to just put a taller fence or try to get some help on that. We're going to have to have a place to play because softball is moving up in the spring to that field that we use. So we knew that. So we'll try to help them any way we can. I mentioned some I-beam that I think we're building our bridges. It's at Newark, so if I can get somebody to get it over pretty cheap. It's one of the, and the guy has a lot of I-beam there, but we took out putting a bridge on that tap grant from Trey Foster. It was $100,000 and I was very convinced that we could put something up for less than that. I just, I just know we can. Expo at the Fire Department, wanted to mention that. 13th tomorrow is the archery and it's in the evening, 5 to 7, you say? And then the 14th probably starts 9:00 to 4:00 is and read us the whole thing, but definitely check that out if you can. That's everything on Parks. Anything needed added or? Street Departments, Charles Wilson.
We've set a few tiles. Get some rain. As much as I enjoyed it, it's awesome, but maybe we can get back to doing some more road right-of-ways. Kind of backed off of it because there's so many rocks in our ditches. I didn't catch nothing on fire, but we can get back on that. I've gone over, we've had a bunch of unexpected repair bills and stuff and I've got to move some money over. I'll let Dina, she's got, she helped me today and figured it all out. And I'll let her kind of explain. She's better at it than me on what we need to move around or something.
He's got the money. It's just in the wrong.
Yeah, we're just going to move it from one item to another, create one. So she's got it all down.
Okay. The first is miscellaneous expense. He's over that right now and he still has, you know, until the end of December. Repair and maintain equipment, same way. Trash pickup, same way. Repair and maintain building and grounds. He's put the door in for the new part that they added on for the park slash street apartment over there. And he's doing other things like...
Yeah, we're trying to get the wall sheets up so we can hang the Christmas lights.
I told him it'd be better because auditors look at that. We just need to add that line item, repair and maintain building and grounds. And so his total was $4,539.92 over budget right now. But the total that he says, I asked him what all he might need in those, and the total was $11,800. He's going to put $1,500 in miscellaneous, $3,000 in repair and maintain building and grounds, $6,000 in repair and maintain equipment, and $1,300 in trash pickup. And we just need to move the monies from the street improvement line item, which has $32,758.56, $11,800 of that, move to those other items that I just, and amounts.
entertain a motion for that.
Because he says he's not going to do anything else for the street improvements this year.
Second.
Any discussion?
He's seconded.
I'll ask for a vote on that. Thank you.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Anybody's got any questions? I have, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I just, the L and E, I think the building, going to hang on that till the end of the year because you're in the process of...
Yeah, I don't want to move lights out of yet to the street department and then move them from the street department back downtown. So we're going to hold off on demolition of that until after first of year. And that way, whenever we get done and take everything down, we can move it one time. I'll have everything out of it but the Christmas lights. So, I mean, if they want to start it soon as we get the Christmas lights out, great, but I think they need to wait until after all the Christmas stuff. So we'll wait until after.
That'll give me time to get my stuff out there, too.
Yeah, Jay's got some stuff, so that'll give us a little more time. Like I said, we've been pretty busy. I don't want to move everything once and then move it back again and then move it back. We'll just do it one time and be done with it, so.
Also, going to have somebody look at that kiosk maybe this coming week and start repairing on that. I know Roberta Katz has got a plaque down there and Lori Black talked to me about it. We talked around it. We just kind of tidy it up. And maybe during the winter, we can do that fountain in-house, you know.
Yeah, they've kind of done that kiosk in, like a treated lumber, which was great, but, I mean, surely we can afford to do something a little nicer, some kind of western cedar or something. I mean, it...
Something cedar.
Clean it up and fix it where we can actually have a glass panel. Instead of having a laminated board, when you have a plexiglass panel or something, we can lift up and then change that sheet instead of doing all that expense. It'd be a lot nicer to have a glass panel there.
Your new pictures look good on the sign and all the back-up sign. In case you put up the purple heart. I know in the south, I hadn't been to the north, but...
North, it looks better.
Okay.
They've done a little bit of rock work.
Yeah. That's just our tank.
Yeah, that's something we need to decide, too, is are we going to do the Welcome to Clinton sign north, just like the one that's down south? Or, I mean, if so, we need to figure out and get the stuff ordered and get that put together.
I think that's...
It's just a blank sign up there, so.
I don't know if we have the negatives or the same prints or who did that, but, I mean, I'm, that's...
Y'all get it.
Aesthetically, whoever, but just something that I think it catches it pretty good coming north. I'm fine with the same, same deal. But whoever's on streets can easily write that down.
Yeah, I don't know where the signs. I mean, somebody else did all that. They ordered the pictures and I guess those people come down and put it up. I did change it up, put the ones from the north on that one. I've still got the ones from the south sign, but you can't see nothing. Everything's pretty bad shape, so.
Yeah, I definitely want to kind of make a match. And if we have to replace the pictures, we can do that. Or get new ones.
Yeah, we'll have to have new signs.
Chuck wagon is good to highlight and there's probably some real good ones of that. And then the other two, the courthouse, you know. But that's all I have. And also, the Danny Brown up there, I'm waiting to get some concrete up there on there. I don't know if you had a chance to get up there today. You're going tomorrow morning, right?
I did get a chance to, I guess.
Okay. You did or did not?
I did.
Okay. Yeah, is that a live line?
It is a live line, yeah.
Okay, it's the...
There is a valve that shuts that off. So, I mean, worst case scenario.
Well, we didn't want to cover it up with concrete. If it broke, then that'd ham around our concrete.
But we may put some good topsoil over it and everything and then fix it off. I mean...
Well, what about pipe wrap? I'll get with you tomorrow. We'll go look at it.
We might be able to sleeve that.
That's what I was thinking. Put a sleeve and then...
That would be better if we pour that and fix that.
But that's ever, ever raining.
That peaks two houses. It's just a line slime. There is a valve there. It peaks those next two houses down.
Okay. Yeah, but that's starting to, that and there's a place on pine and there's one on every lane. We're going to, working on that for sure. A lot of places. That's all I got on streets. Anything else for that?
Are you closing the streets here?
What's that?
Are you going to close the streets on this one?
Uh, no, I think...
Are you going to get somewhere else?
A lot of motion second for Charles on that. You talking about the downtown? No, we're doing that under the other orders. Okay. Richards, you wanting to stay for the whole deal or you, well, are you going to talk about the streets or? Okay. You need three, three minutes?
No, I don't need anything. Thank you, guys, for listening to me. I've been here about 18 years now and I've worked with Rich a lot. In fact, I walked the project on Razorback and I showed him all the areas that, as homeowners over there, were concerned about. There's potholes that haven't been filled. What, what potholes they have filled, all they do is patch over the top. They don't protect it, fix it up. It's just an ongoing problem, on and on and on and on. So I don't know what the streets or what you have budgets about doing Razorback, but it's kind of not being taken care of. The mowing is here and missed. And if you drive by on Razorback, you'll see the weeds are about that high on both sides. The other problem is, is the pine needles. They build up on both sides and on, people try to brake when they try to pass somebody. They put the brakes on and they slide in the pine needles. That's a dangerous thing for traffic and people have been into the trees and stuff. The other thing on Razorback is a problem coming up. There's a big, two trees that are ready to fall over Razorback. I don't know if anybody has gone over there. I've got pictures of it. But it's about ready to fall. We've got buses going down that street. We've got cars going down that street. And it's just a matter of time when it's going to fall. With this rain, you can see it ever coming down closer and closer down to Razorback. I'm concerned that it's going to run over, it's going to fall on somebody. So I think that's a real safety issue that needs to be concerned about. The other thing is on Razorback, there's no sign there. It hasn't been for years. The reason is because people come in and steal them. So I don't know if there's a way of coming up with a different type of sign that they won't steal, but it needs to have a sign on there because we get orders from Amazon and others. We can't get any, they go, so what's the street? We don't have a street. It's the fourth street up on the right, so.
Yeah, that's Elvis Presley Boulevard and Razorback and memory lane. We had trouble having Razorback's a problem. Probably is a solution to that. And I'm not, I've not just sat down and tried to, I don't know if we can just do it every one or put it on the landowners, you know, further back and...
You just have to do a concrete one. You just have to do a concrete one. I mean, lots of, probably could.
I think we can do that.
Since I've been here, about 50 signs on there.
He would have a 4x4 one with Razorback on it and put it in concrete and they'll probably run it over. I don't know. They may take it.
Run it off.
Well, we can try it.
Yeah, we can try it.
The other thing I have is about the Razorback and the streets. I'm, I drive up and down 65 all the time. I'm, my background is, when I went to school, I've got a master's in landscape construction. The streets, I don't know why the state, I don't know if the state has given all the green belts over to the city, but all they do is mow it and throw the greens grass on the streets. They don't edge it. So all the grass is growing down the curbs. It's an eyesore, but, I mean, that's me. The other thing is the state is using up near the bridge is a dump zone. I don't know who permitted the state to just use it as a dump zone, but I think the city needs to be concerned on what it looks like. I don't, you know, they got piped there, concrete, you know, piles and piles of dirt and they got mounds of that gravel. So I know they're working to get it all out, but it's just been there a long, long time. And I think that's, that's about it.
And we've talked about that tile down past you toward Henderson, that low spot. On the far end, you got one by past Lumpkin's. But we had talked about that angled tile below you. It's plugged up on one end.
It's where the drain has been a long time. And they patch it, but it just patches it down, patches it down to where it's, the water doesn't flow through it anymore.
See, we can't get over there.
So there's other areas along Razorback that need to be done. And I know that everybody's got a budget problem with getting patches and stuff on 65B in Maine. I mean, you've got a big, huge area that are, that's a disaster area. So I'd like the city to make a little bit of more appearance. And I know you guys are trying to pull everybody in to look at it, but with this crap that's going on the street and, you know, with the state's dumping, it's kind of an eyesore.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Anything else on the streets? Okay. Brings us down to Police Department. Chief James, why not?
We're still here. We've still got Tony Academy. They're doing fine. Our calls for service are up a little bit, but that's just normal August stuff with Labor Day weekend and all that. Ricks were up. We did about 77, not 70, 7 felony charges, two misdemeanor charges. And then we recovered a stolen boat, stolen car, and stolen firearm. So we've been, been pretty busy last month. Other than that, if anybody's got any questions?
I, and I didn't, I put that on our information. I'd got the appraisal back from a fellow that did it. Well, I had three appraisals. I think two local people. Then we paid, I talked to you about, I think we paid $1,250 for an extensive appraisal of the old library, which the address, I think, is on there.
193.
What?
193.
193, thank you, Dina. 193 Court Street. The Quorum Court's going to meet next Thursday and I mentioned that to the judge that we'd be interested in buying that. He looked at the appraisal. I think he was fine with it. I don't know. Can't speak for the Quorum Court what they'll decide. But I'd just like permission if they come through with that appraisal, which was $44,000, to go ahead and purchase that 193 Court Street, which is the old, originally the old bank. And we'd combine that with the Democrat, the old paper office and have enough room for Police Department there. So I just, I just kind of want to mention that. And I entertain a motion to second to, if, if that comes back. I may not even have to have that right now until we decide that. I just wanted you to know that. But if, you know, if we think we need it, motion second to approval to move forward on that if it becomes available, I'd entertain that.
We can do it. Make a motion to approve the $44,000.
Got it.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion on that?
If it, you know, if it falls through, motion's set.
Yeah, yeah. It's, we can't, ain't going to go over that. They probably won't ask for less. I mean, that's a fair appraisal. It's, you know, it's like you do, pretty major, 40 pages. I'll pass around, let you look at it. But I think that's fair for everybody involved, so. Appreciate that. Anything else? I thought I had something else.
Well, you, you're going to have to vote on that since you have a motion second.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Motion second.
If you're done discussing. I'll ask for, I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
That would get everybody. If we get that and get that done, nobody in the city rents anymore, which is, which is good. You know, been there a while and you've sat on it a long time. Other thing I had was just an issue that came up on the traffic, on the flow of the chuck wagon races. And we're looking at a new route next year. I don't know. That modifying the route a little bit, it might be more conducive to everybody, but I've talked to, it would, long time between now and then, but I'd like to go ahead and knock it out. Appreciate the work that everybody did on that, too.
Yeah, that's always, that's always a difficult day for us.
Sure.
It has been for the last 14 years I've been here. So if we can ever get a simplified route, that would definitely make...
Sure. That, that falls on the mayor, you know. I mean, he just assumed, think Dan said, hey, we're going to cross down there and, you know, okay. I just assumed it's coming that way. So I do appreciate the help from DL. He did all, he helped me as much as he could. That's a big job.
When we had the, when we had the fish fry deal down at the, below the ball fields, that, that worked out pretty good, didn't it?
Yeah, that, that's something to consider, too. You know, that area and all the...
And that keeps them from anywhere downtown.
Quorum School District's pretty friendly. We've got some insider people there, too. Clean that off and, you know, that's, they got water, too, and all that. So, well...
That might be a good option, just to keep them from downtown.
Like I say, a year, but a year will be here before you know it.
Yeah.
I'll pass that around. Anything else for Police Chief?
Sir?
Anything else for...
We're just having a meeting.
Anybody question for Jay? Sorry, you're bothering me. I can't hear. Y'all want to look at that? Okay, if not, you don't have to. All right, thank you. Brings us down to Water Department. Will Hinchey.
I've got my notes.
Hey, I had it fixed when I left. Don't even mess it up.
I don't want to see it.
I wrote an, I wrote a new and an old on mine, so. That goes all the way to Dewey, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Those are enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. Take one. I'm sorry. I've got them all.
Did you not give them one?
One and pass it on. Dina, you got to send two back.
Two back?
There you go. Take the one and pass it on. I'm giving out the two. I think I see the problem. It's me.
Now, that was obvious from the get-go.
Warren, can you turn his mic off?
I emailed most of this stuff and no one ever looks at it, so. All right, I'll get started. I will try to keep it as short as possible. I apologize now. The chemical cost for last month was 16 cents per thousand for water treatment. Clinton as a whole, we were 18% water loss, burnt rigs, and then our both still don't look the greatest, 39 and 31. But as a whole, the Clinton water system was 18% water loss, so we're not doing terrible. I'm going to try to follow my agenda for the earlier meeting. I had emailed out the newest acquisition form. If you guys got a chance to look at that. If not, I do encourage you guys to. That way we can kind of finalize this and get this over to B Branch and see if we can't get it signed. The only changes we made this last time on the acquisition form is after we had discussed, they had made the request for an additional board member on the water board. We'd gotten that straightened out. And if you'll look, I don't know if you have it... We've gotten that straightened out and if you'll look, I don't know if you have it, you probably don't have it in front of you. I didn't print off enough for everybody, but we did simplify that and state that they have representation now. And if that person steps down, then we would appoint someone that was in that physical water system is how it reads. So that's how that was addressed. And then the other was a closing date. Since we re-signed the agreement to take in, take out their loans in Clinton's name, that give us until August of next year for a closing, so it got an extension. So our closing date for our loans we're wanting to take out for Clinton is we gotta make a we gotta make our first draw by the end of December. With them, we won't have to do anything until August of next year. So we put a no later than date that we would take them over until August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. Those are the two changes, but do look over that and I do have a couple of copies here if someone wants them. I have three copies, so I can give that to you. Moving on. Next month will be our sixth and final five percent increase. So that is some of the sheets that I passed out for you and what I did is it's kind of a quick and easy cheat sheet. It will show you that the one page here. So we got two different, three-page packets. One page there has more line items and everything, and that's basically just the figures. It's got the taxes added in. It's got the forty cent health department fees is in there and the three dollar clarifiers in there. So it will show you how we come up with, if you're a residential customer with sewer, your minimum bill will be forty-six seventy-nine. If you look at that next to the other packet, you'll see that the increase there was a dollar twenty-five. So if you were, if you're a customer and you're on city water and you're inside the city limits and you have city sewer, your bill is going up a dollar twenty-five for the minimum. And then we have little cheat sheets there that says if you use two thousand gallons, how much it's going up, three thousand. But we have that for every rate that we have in the system. Residential, industrial and commercial and residential. So we got that. This little cheat sheet, if anybody has any questions, we could go over it. But all in all, we we did a five percent increase and this was our sixth and final that had been voted upon. Which brings me to ANRC. ANRC has looked over our finances. We were asking for ten million in loan at a four percent increase or a four percent interest rate, I'm sorry. And part, half of that's gonna be water, half of it's gonna be sewer. After ANRC, which has the final say on all water and sewer systems in the state of Arkansas on any loans, they have come up that we are about four hundred thousand dollars deficit in a year's time to pay back that debt service. So tonight I presented this to my water board, just like I'm presenting it to you right now. We voted there at the very last of the meeting that we would have another meeting next week. I got all this information sent to me about thirty minutes, about four o'clock today. So decisions being made was we didn't come up with any. But we are, according to ANRC, in order to take these loans out, we do have to come up with about four hundred thousand dollars additional revenue in a year. That if we if that is spread across the board, you're looking at ten dollars per customer for every single water and sewer customer. Part of that money is sewer, part of that money is water. So our board decided that we would like to have a workshop. City council's invited also and come up with different ratios, whether we want to do that a one, you know, we got with my water customers and sewer customers, about one out of three customers that I've got is a sewer customer. So I got one-third of my customer base has city sewer. So we could do a one-third ratio split or come up with different ways. So that's something I'd like for you guys to toss around, think about, get back with me, set up a meeting. We will be meeting as of right now next Thursday. I know that's Quorum Court, but if any of you guys go to that, but we will be having a meeting at four-thirty at the water office on Thursday to discuss options.
And our rate increase was what we projected by our engineer, their engineers. It was enough then prices keep going up, but you know, customer, you know, just backing up. We did this incremental increase to cover this debt.
We did. We started raising rates five years ago. This will be our sixth rate increase.
Borrow this money and so we can pay it back.
To get this, but with the cost of living and everything, and I'm not trying to hide anything, so anybody out there listening on Facebook, if you would like to sit down, call me or anything, you can call the office, set up an appointment. We're not trying to hide anything. Be completely out front. Any information I have, I will share and we will continue to do so, but this was, we finally got these answers. We've been asking for them. Uh, we thought we had a deficit we needed to meet. It was just with their, the way that their formula, and you got the formula out in front of you, the way their formula works is they gotta have a hundred and ten percent coverage on all debt. You'll see on their one line item, we did not figure in is your O and M expenses. They did a hundred and ten percent increase on what our two thousand twenty-three audit showed that our O and M expenses was. And that is the requirement within ANRC.
ANRC is over every loan, whether you get it.
Was that six oh five, when it come out, even if I borrowed from a local bank? And I couldn't, if my debt service didn't show it, I have to send them a rate study showing them our rates and what we're taking out. And ANRC has final say on any loan.
So what people are used to is the regular yearly dollar and a quarter, dollar and change, dollar thirty, dollar ten, whatever it is. But this would be an additional, and we're gonna have that workshop next.
Yeah, we're gonna have our first. We may have several meetings and that's totally up to you guys. I will say this, ANRC is asking us to pass an ordinance showing what our rate increase would be by October, the October meeting. I don't know if it's medable. Tomorrow I'm gonna get a hold of Ryan Bowman. Ryan Bowman is our bond counsel. He's our, so when we take out a bond, he is legal counsel that that knows all the Chad's dealt with and he knows all the bylaws and everything. You know, if we change any sewer rates, you have to have a public hearing. I'm gonna ask him. You know, we we had talked, we had tossed around a debt service line item on the water bill. Instead of doing just a minimum bill rate increase or a per thousand, do a debt service line item. So that's one thing we were looking at, but I want to get all the answers from Ryan on what we can legally do or cannot do and what steps we have to take. So I'll be following up on that tomorrow. But if you guys have any discussion, any ideas, what you would like to see done, we did have a few water board members that felt that it needed to be, since part of it was sewer, it didn't need to go out to everybody the same amount, so we will be, it's it's been thrown out there. The original is saying if we went up ten dollars per customer, that's three hundred and sixty-eight customers, then it would cover that debt.
Okay. Anything for Will else?
This is, this is loans we already have, right?
No, it is not. This is loans that we, well, this is loans that we have put in for. This is the money we have asked for. It's ten million dollars. And that one sheet I put out there that's got the ten-year plan on there has each project, whether it be water and sewer, and it's divided out there and it has the total amount that we've asked for. Do, uh, we'll tell you and point out that two million of that is not covered in that and two million of that is what we put in construction fund with the rate.
You are saving money. You're in.
We have put in, we put in a little over two million dollars in construction the last five years.
ANRC and the, uh.
ANRC also requires us to, so for every penny we borrow, we have to put five percent of that into a line item in depreciation. So if I spend, if I spend so much on, one of these is the Archie Creek sewer line, getting two million dollars for it. I'll have to put five percent of that two million dollars into a depreciation fund and keep that in there. I can add more to it throughout the years, but I have to maintain a five percent of that in there. That's a requirement until they tell me I can spend it. They have control on it. If I need any money out of that for repairs or anything on that project, I have to send in a request to ANRC and they will release the funds.
So is this like a third bond? I see first bond issued in twenty twenty-four for water and sewer, and then a second bond in twenty.
This is the proposal.
So that's kind of the way it's gonna be spent.
Yeah.
That's the way it's gonna be spent, but all that will come out at one time.
That's the way this ten million is gonna be spent?
Yes.
And all that, to get this loan, you had to have it engineered and that's been done.
We have paid for all the engineering on all these projects. We had to pay for that upfront. We will be reimbursed, so it is figured into this. Once we do the loan closing, we can reimburse. We had to pay it out a separate account, but we have paid for all of these projects to be engineered.
What are the bonds that we have out that you're making?
The only bond we have out besides what we took in from Denard is the clarifier project. And that's your three dollars per per mill.
Yeah, so we know that's covered because that surcharge is.
We haven't taken out any bonds in the last five years.
And, okay, and then you said Denard, and how much, how much was that?
So Denard, when we took them in, we were right under a million. Uh, now we've got it down, we had it down a couple of months ago where it was somewhere around eight hundred thousand. We did vote at our last meeting to go ahead and pay off two of those. I don't have those in front of me. We had two of the larger ones had a real high interest rate and we weren't paying anything on a premium. In our water board meeting, we discussed, then we decided to go ahead and pay off two of those notes and then take that money we were normally paying and pay off and put them towards the other two exceeding notes.
So when you're looking at this requested amount for the sewer and water, that's more than ten million?
Yes, and I have.
Eleven, eleven point eight or eleven point nine.
And we have two million in construction.
And take the two million off of that and then that's where we get the ten?
Yes.
And so they're saying, basically, if they're doing a hundred percent coverage, we're looking at close to a million dollar bond payment every year for twenty years.
Yeah, that's on your, so what they, on his, uh, you're you're looking at four hundred thousand a year for twenty years.
Annual payment.
Four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand for sewer and four hundred thousand for water? Cause that's, um, I, on here, on this sheet on sewer, it says term twenty, twenty years, annual payment, four hundred two thousand six fifty-five eighty-nine. On the annual, but the, you know, the hundred percent, but when you go to water term and it's, you know, the hundred and ten percent is five hundred nineteen thousand for hundred fifty-five.
Yes.
So you're talking close to a million dollars for twenty years for this particular bond. And so they're saying that we're four hundred, their, their formula says we're four hundred thousand, that we're like half short?
Yes.
Got you. Okay, so when do we have this workshop? Have you decided that or?
We are, we are meeting as a board and you are welcome next Thursday.
At what time?
At four-thirty.
Okay, and by that time you will have our bond agent to do a presentation on the, on the, on the numbers or whatever that we have, you have from.
Our bond counsel, once the, once you guys come up with something, our bond counsel will look over Chad's ordinance and then he'll piggyback on it, yes, but that'll be by the next month.
So is he gonna, so he's not gonna look at these numbers before the meeting next week?
He, I'm gonna call him and see what we can do, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll be there. DL, you have to make it up at the school board meeting.
And we, if we need to change that, if we want to do it, we can. We just come up with Thursday. I know that two people out on my water board are gonna be gone the following week, so we just schedule.
Don't change anything. Hey, I can, I can change. I'd rather, I'd rather one person change and me change than have a meeting change, so keep your board members here, right?
What's been proposed, I guess, or thrown out there is it be a debt service line item?
Yes.
So I guess for the rate ordinance, I probably need to, I might need to talk to Ryan about that a little bit or just see what it needs to look like.
Yeah.
It's not.
And it has to, it has to meet ANRC's approval too, so we'll.
So we probably need to workshop that also.
Okay.
It's it's a little, it's not just adding, adding something to an existing number. It's gonna be a separate line.
So, you know, the way we've looked at, I have looked into, if we just do a straight debt service at that ten dollars, you know, you wouldn't have to have any public meeting or anything like that, but if you go to change a sewer rate, if you say this debt, a sewer customer has a different debt service than a water customer, then that's actually a sewer increase, a sewer rate change. We will probably, more than likely, would have to have a public hearing, but I'm gonna get all those answers from Ryan.
And that'd be an additional, say, ten dollars a month for at least the term of twenty years?
Yes. But I do not want to false advertise and let anybody know this. Just know this. This won't be the only loan that we take out in the next twenty years. It just can't be. Uh, so just know that, yes, when I tell you that that is a debt service and it is covered and if I tell you it's gonna come off when that twenty years is up, more than likely, it's gonna be covering something else. I don't want to falsify that. I don't want to make any false promises.
Right, and I'm just saying.
Yeah, just, that was just, that was just a simplified way where everybody know this is the amount we took out. This is what ANRC that we, they, they presented to me as a debt service and it could be a line item. We can break it down. We can eventually break it down and do, we can do, we can raise the rates on a minimum, raise the rates on the per thousand. It's just, this was a quick, clean line.
When you start doing this for the person out there going, man, we've been paying, we've been paying, we'll get something done. When you start deciding, getting that money and start fixing those, if one is infiltration, that's a lot less water you have to treat with chemicals. I mean, you can start seeing a savings.
And that's why, you know.
Start the work, I think it'll get better, but it'll always, things aren't getting cheaper. Everybody knows.
Please, anybody, anybody out there can call me and talk to me. I've talked to you about each one of these projects. There's not one project on this list on here that we haven't been told we have to fix. There is one, let me take that back. There is that million gallon tank leak. It's still on there, but know that we have kind of, we've moved that. We use that same amount of money, that hundred and fifty thousand, and put it towards another one. This was just the first deal and we've got that approval through ANRC to put that, take that money and use it somewhere else. You know, we just, we've gotten this full amount. Some of these are general and we can have play with it, but all of it has to be spent. ANRC will only give me the money after it's been spent. So I can't take this money and use it for anything else except these projects.
Well, and if you don't, I mean, every one of these projects, if you, if you table one of them, say you, well, we don't want to borrow that much right now, you're still gonna have to do it. In a few years, it's gonna come up again. You might as well do it all right now.
There's not one of these projects on here that have not already been on here for twenty years.
And that's what I was saying too, if, if people have the question, is the water system and sewer system better off now than it was seven years ago? Or six years ago?
Yeah, no, I know we we raised rates, we did five percent increase, we've done it, this will be our sixth time. But do know that we have been making a lot of in-house. We've upgraded some of the pump stations ourselves. We've ordered pumps, we've changed out pumps. We've had several of our lift stations go completely down and we've had to buy new mode pumps and motors for that. One of those pumps and motors on South Sewer Two costs ninety-eight thousand dollars alone for one motor. Just everything's cost so much and the improvements we've been doing in-house, we are covering them with our current rate. It's just this big chunk, like I said, we're, we're coming up halfway short.
Not, you know, the thing about it is that we wouldn't have done that seven years ago and and we forfeited, you know, our bond issue and the state came in and take, took over the water and sewer system. These rates would be a heck of a lot higher than that what we're proposing.
Right now, they're saying it needs to be ten dollars per customer. If we hadn't have changed them rates, it'd been over twenty.
And I'm, you know, and I'm still that proponent of, you know, maintenance of effort on every department, every department.
Be thinking about this too. We, we talked about this in our last meeting. I know Jeff heard us say it. You know, yes, I just now said that this was the last five percent increase. It's not. It is the last five percent increase that has been voted on six years ago. So.
Yeah, we never got to the point.
The state, without looking at anybody, is recommending you do a three percent every year. That's just without looking at your paperwork or without looking at rights or anything because they're recommending you go up a little bit every year. That way, when you do have to make a jump, you don't have to make a bigger jump. Just know, I mean.
That's, that's the one thing we pretty much learned in that class. When we went to that class down there, that's one thing we pretty much learned is you can. you can choose not to raise rate increase, but they're gonna force you to if you don't.
Yeah.
They're gonna do an audit every so many years.
We have to turn in.
And they're gonna tell you, you have to raise your rates.
State law says now we have to turn in to ANRC a rate study every five years. It has to be done by a licensed, someone that is approved through an ARC to do it. And this is our first one, it's showing we've gotta do this, and just, if we keep up with that, after that, the city council, you know, keep up with it, we just keep flowing, then the next one maybe won't be too bad, and, but they have final say.
I think, I think a couple of weeks in the, in the media and all that kind of stuff, I think there was a community down in southeast Arkansas that, that wound up, you know, not doing the 3%, but when they went in there, it wound up to do what, I think they were doing a project or something, and their rate, I mean, their, their city council voted on it, and it was like 110% increase and saw that. I mean, they're gonna have to go back and check that because everybody went crazy, but, I mean, you gotta do it.
You know, B branch got the same money.
And you have to show people why, why you're doing it, and, and the projects that are out there that still need to be done, and that's, that's the way you, that's the way you do it.
And one question that's already been asked that will be asked again, is this increase to have anything to do with us taking in B branch? And it does not. None of their finances are in this. This is totally Clinton Water and Sewer. B branches will come later, and it'd be towards their customers. So, it'll be a total different, they're looking at those rates and everything now. B branch did get a lot of forgiveness, uh, and they are paying theirs back at a 1.5% interest rate because we're taking them in, it's with the consolidation. So, theirs won't be huge, but for their smaller customer base, it's still gonna be big.
Didn't they just have a rate increase?
They did, they raised their rates, uh, not too long ago. Whenever we went up the last time, well, I'll say that, a year ago, when we, when we raised rates a year ago, they went up also.
Okay, anything else for Will?
Now, on, on this deal here, that increase will just be on, like, just inside the city limit?
No, it'll be for all water customers. Now, that's what we gotta, that's what the workshop is gonna do, how we're gonna divide up that, whether we're gonna say, all right, this.
$10 a person or?
That 400,000 is gonna be divided $10 per person for the 368 customers we've got, or 3,068, or whether we want to nitpick and we say, hey, we're, we're covering more with water already, because we did a rate increase, we want to divide it. That's just something, up until this last meeting, we were leaning towards just that straight line item.
What the Water Commission was discussing tonight was more than 50% of this 10-year plan is sewer. So, they're saying it's not really fair to put the whole, put the rate increase on everybody because we're kind of subsidizing the sewer with everybody else's water bill. So, they were talking about, you know, maybe doing a sewer rate increase separate than the water.
And if you looked at the finances, and it's like Mr. Barnes pointed out, water can, water can do it right now. Like, water can take out their half, and that's not their rate increase. So, don't think that that 7% or that 5% increase we've been doing did not help the water. But sewer is, we've not ever made any money with sewer. We're, we're subsidizing. But it is a big part, and there's gonna be more and more people that's gonna be required sewer. We had a conversation about that earlier. We're in a fine situation where no one wants to build inside city limits because they don't want city sewer because it costs so much, but the regulations are getting so strong even out in the country. I can't make a water tap for you, I don't care how much acreage you have, until you get permission from the health department. It's getting, I cannot make you an irrigation tap unless you get permission from the health department. They are really cracking down on this.
Isn't there a thing where you, if you're within so many?
If you're within 300 feet, it's a no question, they won't even give you a permit for a septic tank.
But you have to hook on to city sewer if it's available within so, so many yards.
Within 300 feet.
And then depending on the age of your septic tank, how fast you have to get on.
Yeah.
So, that's what I was asking.
And if you're currently grandfathered in and you have a septic system, and it fails, and you're within 300 feet, you will hook on to city sewer.
Do they not have a time limit depending on how old the septic tank is? Like, if it's been there for 20 years?
Unless I'm wrong.
I was thinking, then you check on that, but I think after a period of time, it's like you've got five years if your tank is over 20 years old.
I've had people be a lot further than 300 feet that just would refuse a perk test because they knew they were up above the water, the, the city sewer, and they said, do it, no matter what it costs. Which, you get to think about it, septic tanks aren't cheap anymore either, but you just don't have that monthly charge. But right now, our monthly charge is less than, our minimum bill is less than $20 for, for sewer.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
And it costs more for me to treat sewer than it does make water. So, just know that right now, the rate at sewer is just, it's not enough.
Okay, yeah, like I say, we'll meet Thursday, and then we can call you anytime.
Anytime.
And I appreciate, but I appreciate Jeff and Sam and all those guys, and our water board, they're not overpaid. Mayor may be, but those people, you know, they get paid nothing, and I appreciate.
Yeah, just a, just a note, because that was interesting when you said that. You said it's $20 for sewer? I'm just curious.
It's less than 20, yes. And you can look at that, in that, on that line that we got divided out, like, you can look at the inside city, uh, customer with sewer, and then you can look at the inside city, uh, residential no sewer, and so the new, so for water and sewer is 46.79, and if you just have water only in your inside city and your residential customer, it's 29.69. So, there's your difference.
$20.
Okay.
I built that house about 13 years ago, and I'd have about 13 more years left to pay it off at that rate for my, for what I pay for my septic system, so it's a, septic's are not cheap.
Yeah, and, you know, like, we just got pointed out here, there's a lot of customers, you're in city limits, you don't have city sewer. There's a lot of customers that don't have it, that want it, because their septic's are failing.
I would have happily tied into the city sewer had it been available when I built my house, yeah.
Okay, anything else for Will? Thank you. Go feed if you need to. Brings us down to zoning department. Tim Clark is not here, he's sick, sick, sick. He looked bad yesterday. I don't know that date on the Dollar Tree. I know he's putting stuff up and they say.
They got, they got items in the store.
Tim said yesterday that it helped him Thursday.
They're filling shelves.
Yeah.
They look like they're training right now.
Uh, flood plane, I just hate to mention this, but, you know, you know, it's just, uh, I think, uh, one of our senators, Cotton, is, is reaching out to them. He's helping us out quite a bit, and I think Senator Bozeman too. And, uh, I think we're a lot better shape, I feel a lot better about than I did a week ago today, but I don't feel good about it. We've been waiting on that a long time, people downtown. The people that did the study, uh, were comfortable with it, and we got new management in there, but I think we're feeling our way through it, so I hope something good comes out. Tim could give you the nuts and bolts, but I do feel better on that, and if I didn't, I wouldn't say it. Uh, Moonshine Festival is November the 1st over at the Fairgrounds. Lone Star will be performing. Oh, they're gonna be meeting at 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 19th, uh, on the Moonshine Festival over at Fairfield Bay. I don't know, I don't think everybody, but I was gonna mention that. Will Buck, Thomas, and Dawn are gonna have it at the Fairgrounds, so that'll be good for Clinton. They're very grateful A&amp;P for advertising on that fan, and they've got little flyers, so looking, they're looking for a good turnout for that, so. Thanks to the Van Buren County Fair, uh, Board, Dawn and all them, that's helped them with that. Uh, about all I have on zoning. I can't give you a whole lot. I'll answer any questions that I might know. I know Tim was, I haven't heard from him, so he don't call. He's, he's sick. He looked terrible yesterday and probably not much better. Hope he gets better. Brings us down to unfinished business. It's an ordinance levying the millage. Uh, we, uh, this is a, um, a 2.9% millage that we renew every year. It hadn't went up, and we hadn't taken it down. At this time, uh, we've had the first reading. I'll entertain a motion to place it on the second and third reading by title only.
So, moved, second?
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, when is this, when is this due in? We gotta have it turned in by when?
Uh, is it November?
November meeting of the form court.
Why do we have to put it on a second, third reading? Why can't we just?
We can put it on the second. I just put it on a, just to get, I did, I just, I decided that I was gonna put it on second, third reading.
I made, I motioned we'd put it on the second, third reading by title only, get it took care of. That's what we seconded, so.
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll put that on there. I didn't think, to answer your question. Uh, okay, I'll read this. It's an ordinance levying a 2.9 mil rail and personal property tax for general operations of the City of Clinton, Arkansas, to declare an emergency and for other purposes.
Hold on, we need to vote.
Oh, to put on the?
First, before you read it.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead, I'll ask for a vote on that.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
No.
Or?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Uh, again, it's an ordinance levying a 2.9 mil rail and personal property tax for general operations of the City of Clinton, Arkansas, to declare emergency for other purposes. Is there any more, uh, discussion on that?
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Call for a vote to adopt the ordinance, a motion.
Second.
Second.
Second. I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
No.
Or?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Uh, I'll also entertain a motion, second, to adopt the emergency clause for this.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
No.
Or?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
2024-06.
Okay, brings us down to new business. The first item in new business is 2022 and 2023 legislative audit report. Uh, and something that we, obviously audited every year, always had pretty good results. Dana did a really good job of that. Uh, we had no findings for 2022 and 2023 audit. State law requires this report to be reviewed by our governing body, which is the city council, to take appropriate action relating to each finding and recommendations, since there were no findings, so no recommendations. We don't have to take any action on that, but we do have to read it into the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2022 and 23 audit report, uh, of the City of Clinton, Arkansas.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? I'll just say, you got a very sharp pencil, Dana. Thank you. I mean, that's, that's a good thing. Keeps us in the black and no questions. Uh, I'll ask for a, a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next comes the ordinance for temporary entertainment district, first, second, and third reading. Uh, this is for a high school reunion we have coming. Uh, also homecoming for the Clinton, uh, three years ago. I think Mark Story started this, uh, reunion, tried to tie it in with a homecoming, which he did. Also, the chili cook-off, uh, jumped in there, and gonna have it the same day. It'd be the October the 3rd, 4th, uh, and the 5th. That's the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I just wrote some things that Van Buren County had passed. Liquor sales, it became wet a few years ago. Uh, have people paying taxes on drinks downtown. We have a new, uh, business down there. This event, I thought, would be a good opportunity. People have talked about an entertainment district downtown. It'd be a good time to have it. We went back and forth, that that'll come up in the discussion, we read this, uh, to try it out there for entertainment districts, see what works and see what doesn't, so that's what we'll be discussing. So, I'll entertain, that's our ordinance. I'll entertain a motion to place this on the first, uh, second, for the first, second, and third reading. I'll entertain a motion, put this on the first reading. I'll read it, and then we'll do, that's the best way to do it.
Well, if you want to do it for October, we'll have to do it on the third reading.
It has an emergency clause, so if you pass the emergency clause, you can pass it on one reading.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, put this on, and I'm gonna read it, read through it, and then we can discuss it, first reading.
So, you, you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion. All right, I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
This is an ordinance of the City of Clinton establishing a Court Square Temporary Entertainment District and rules related thereto within the City of Clinton that's authorized by Act 812 of 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the 92nd Arkansas General Assembly enacted 812 of 2019, authorizing the establishment of designated entertainment districts to promote hospitality and tourism and establish areas of a city or town that highlights restaurants, entertainment, and hospitality options. And whereas such designated entertainment districts may be established in contiguous areas of the city that are customarily used for commercial purposes and contain any combination of restaurants, taprooms, taverns, entertainment establishments, hospitality establishment, music venues, theaters, bars, art galleries, art studios, tourist destinations, distilleries, dance clubs, cinemas, or concert halls. And whereas it is the intent of this ordinance to designate a specific Court Square Temporary Entertainment District with a defined footprint for use during an upcoming event. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the City of Clinton, Arkansas, that section one, Temporary Entertainment District, there is hereby designated a Temporary Entertainment District pursuant to ACA Section 1454-141-2B, specifically designated as the Court Square Temporary Entertainment District, which is hereby defined as follows. All public right-of-way's along the center line described as beginning at the intersection of Main Street and Court Street, thence in an easterly direction along Main Street to the intersection of Main Street and Greg Street, thence in a southerly direction along Greg Street to the intersection of Greg Street and Elm Street, thence in a westerly direction along Elm Street to the intersection of Elm Street and Court Street, thence in a northerly direction along Court Street to the point of beginning of the intersection of Main Street and Court Street, section two. The following rules shall apply to Temporary Entertainment District known as designated as the Court Square Temporary Entertainment District. A, alcoholic beverages lawfully sold by an establishment within the designated entertainment district properly licensed for the sale of alcoholic beverages are permitted for consumption within the entertainment district, subject to the rules established by this ordinance. B, all alcoholic beverages sold as allowable for consumption within the Temporary Entertainment District shall be in plastic cup, a plastic cup no larger than 16 fluid ounces in size. The names or logos of the participating establishments shall be commercially or professionally printed. A cup identifying the Court Square Temporary Entertainment District may be used generically by all participating businesses listed separately on the plastic cup. As long as the identifying information is commercially or professionally printed thereon, no refills are allowed. C, no alcoholic beverage in bottled glass or cans are permitted for consumption outside of a licensed establishment in the Temporary Entertainment District. Consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages that were not purchased within the entertainment district itself are prohibited. And D, no one shall be in possession of more than one alcoholic beverage at a time. E, consumption or possession of alcoholic beverage is not permitted in or a vehicle parked in any public right-of-way within any entertainment district. Consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages is specifically prohibited in any other motorized means of transportation. F, the physical boundaries of the entertainment district shall be clearly marked with temporary pavement markings or temporary signage or both. The public, including law enforcement, must be able to clearly discern when patrons are entering or exiting the entertainment district. These rules and provisions regarding a temporary entertainment district are not intended to and do not supersede, eliminate, or otherwise impede the enforcement or conditional permitting of any other state or local law or regulation regarding the sale or consumption of alcohol or alcoholic beverages. For instance, rules against public intoxication or any other related offense are applicable to the Temporary Entertainment District. All state laws and all rules of Alcohol Beverage Control Division and Department of Health must be followed at all times. H, the hours of operation for the Court Square Temporary Entertainment District shall be from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM on Friday, October the 3rd, 24th, and Saturday, October the 4th, 25th. Is that right?
I don't think so.
Friday's the 4th.
What?
Friday's the 4th.
Yeah. Yeah. Friday, October the fourth, and Saturday, October the fifth, two thousand twenty four.
No.
Uh, participating businesses should utilize a unique in-color or designed wristband for each day the temporary entertainment district is open. Wristbands will be issued upon verifying the person is at least twenty-one years of age, and patrons must wear the designated wristband in order to carry an alcoholic beverage outside the business establishment and about the entertainment district. Transferring wristbands to another patron is prohibited. Wristbands should have the initials or first or last name of the patron whom it was issued and the date, month, and day of issuance. K, there shall be clearly identified limited numbers of location where ingress to and egress from the entertainment district to parking facilities shall be allowed. Section three, if any portion of this ordinance is deemed to be in conflict with pre- with a previously existing city ordinance, such previously existing ordinance is hereby repealed to the extent necessary to resolve such conflict. Nothing herein shall be read to repeal any part of a permanent entertainment district ordinance, notwithstanding the foregoing. Section four, if any provision of this ordinance is determined to be invalid due to the application of law, such invalidity shall not affect the validity of other provisions of this ordinance. And to that end, the provisions of this ordinance shall be deemed servable. Section five, emergency clause. The city of Clinton finds that immediate implementation of this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public's peace, health, peace, health, safety, welfare, and property of an emergency as hereby declared to exist and this ordinance to be in effect immediately after its adoption. Section six, this ordinance is not to be codified in the municipal code. Separate codification, if necessary, will be done subsequently. There.
So we need a, we need a motion to amend section-
Okay.
Two H to correct-
Right now, I'll entertain a motion to, to amend section H.
I got another question.
Let's go ahead.
Before you do that. The Saturday, i- is it six thirty to ten PM, or is it all day Saturday?
Same, the same time.
Same, it's not all day. Let's say all this amendment first.
Right, they ain't got a motion for amendment yet, and we need to put all this amendment in one deal, cause it's all in the same spot. We need to put that time for Saturday, too, unless you want Saturday to be all day.
You think it's confusing the way it's written?
Well, that's fine.
I think it could be, somebody could say, well, Saturday, Saturday didn't have a time.
The addition was six-
Yeah, I got you.
No, 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 that's fine.
I think we should put it in for both.
If you read it that way, it's confusing.
Okay.
I make a motion, we amend section two H to change the dates to October, Friday, October fourth, Saturday, October fifth, and to add the times from six thirty PM to ten PM on the Saturday, too.
I'll say that.
You have a discussion? I'll ask for a vote on the amendment.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
You got your amendments. Any discussion on any of this and why we did it and how we got there? And you may want to elaborate on that. I mentioned that, that's been brought up to me for an entertainment district downtown, and that's something that, that is like Will was talking about the water, you don't just run through it, you know? It's something, a way to, to get something out there, an event. I think this is a really good event. We had talked to, uh, on, I think Thursday night, we're just gonna have, uh, refreshments down there for retired teachers, whatever. If they want to go into establishment over there, that's their choice. Friday will be the dance after the homecoming game, football game, six thirty to, uh, ten is a pretty good time. It falls in our time ordinance also, not, not too loud. I talked to some of the folks on the court square. I talked to the fellow at the call, he was fine with it. Linda Rota was fine with it. I think you were gonna talk to your mom and that. So I'll, I'll let you handle that. And then also Saturday, uh, talked to Jason at the chamber, and he said, you know, chili cook-off is a lot of times, you just, it's just chili, they're out of there by about one o'clock at the, at the latest. And we talked about maybe having available that, decided it was best, it's, just leave that like it always was. If there's booths there, if there's anybody that didn't want that, that's fine. I'd even talked about making this portion, and you can elaborate on that, on just what we had discussed. Cut it, you know, on one side of the court square. And I think the chief said, quite frankly, it's easier to patrol a known boundary that we've had established for a long time, for all these events, for election returns or whatever, when we shut it down. Uh, and it makes sense. So that, that's, um, you know, I think that's obviously right.
So I understand it's, it's not encompassing the courthouse, it's going along each side of the courthouse?
Yeah, and they're gonna go in the courthouse, and it'll be blocked, you can probably stand on the sidewalk.
What, what we did, no, what it is, is it's, it is the court square.
Public right-of-
It, it are all, all the streets that surround the courthouse.
Public right-of-ways, so sidewalks.
Sounded to me like it was going around the, the block there where Hogs and Heifers is.
No.
Okay.
The court square, we talked-
No, court, main, court, main, grigs, Elm.
So all around the court square?
All around the court square.
I, 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 I lugged the water on that. I thought we'd just put it on one side.
Okay.
I think that was something, we had fir- first started off with maybe just Greg Street. I think feedback is it might actually be easier to enforce or, or for everyone to understand, cause part of the idea is it needs to be clear to everyone where, what the district is. So it might be easier just for everyone if it's the court square. So just to kind of, anybody that might be listening or whatever, what, what this means. What it, what an entertainment d- district does is it basically allows someone to carry an open container of alcohol without being in violation of Arkansas law, which prohibits the carrying of alcohol in public. Uh, so that's what it does. It does not, it does not waive any sort of prohibition on public intoxication. And I think, I don't want to speak for the city police, but the city attorney, I'm certainly still going to enforce the city's public intoxication laws. It also does not prohibit the general public from being on the square. So it's not like you have to have a card and show that you're twenty-one years of age to be present during this period of time. What it does is if you're gonna participate in this particular entertainment district as a carrying, you know, person, you'll get a wristband from the, from the vendor, um, that you'll have to have on at all times while you're, while you're in possession. So if someone's, you know, we're not saying, we're not saying a child can't come with someone who doesn't want to drink and wants to be responsible at the reunion, it just means that one person can have it and have that wristband to be marked. Still, you know, it, it, the, the nature of it with the court, with the closure in that period of time anyway is gonna kind of help out with sort of traffic and things like that. And again, it is only these two days, and after this is done, there will be no existence of any entertainment district at all in the city of Clinton. If you want to do something that's more reoccurring or permit or something like that, you need to take some sort of further legislative action. So probably a good opportunity for you to kind of see how it goes and think about it as a city, whether this is something that you want to make, something more, more regular, so.
Now, will the square be closed off for the chili cook-off thing, too, or is that gonna be open?
We'll go close that off, and if I need to get a separate deal for that, probably, but we always do that.
Do we need something like that, just for coverage?
I think that's supposed to be covered at some point, I mean, tonight.
Yeah.
Probably supposed to do that.
But not in these.
We'll do it as soon as we weigh through this and we can put that to bed. Any other discussion on that? Did I, did I say first reading on this, and then I can do the second, third?
There's an emergency clause, so if you pass it, and pass the emergency clause, it takes immediate-
Okay, okay. Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
And we're voting on it with the emergency clause.
To adopt the ordinance first?
I think reg- recommendation is to ha- is to pass it and then pass the emergency clause.
Right.
So, yeah, separate vote.
Entertain a motion second to pass this.
Well, we already got that.
Already did that.
We need to vote.
We need to vote.
Need to vote.
To adopt the ordinance?
Well, that's what we did so he could read it.
Yeah.
Is our motion second for that.
Just to read it, though. We haven't vote, or we haven't, we voted to do that, and then we voted for the amendment. We have not, we have not done-
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, dude.
Second?
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Entertain a motion second to adopt the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Twenty twenty four dash oh seven.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion second to, uh, set down the court square for the chili, uh, cook-off.
Wait, I thought we had to do the emergency clause.
Do what?
We just did.
We just did.
Pass.
That's what you seconded.
It was built into it. This time, I'll entertain a motion second to close down the court square on that Saturday, the fifth, okay? Uh, for the chili cook-off from, I usually, I think-
Six AM to about-
Six thirty more? Or not, not more.
From six to-
Two thirty.
Two thirty gets everybody time.
But wouldn't it be just as easy to keep it closed all day?
They got, you got stuff happening Friday night, you got chili cook-off Saturday morning, and you got that stuff happening Saturday night?
You wait home, because- Move people off the court.
Yes.
I think we need to have it closed all day. They just leave it from six thirty to six thirty. That's six thirty in the morning until ten o'clock Saturday night.
Well, no.
Yes.
It'd just be till six thirty.
Friday, six thirty, Saturday night, ten PM.
That would make it easy for my guys.
Yes. But we already have one from six thirty on Saturday night, so just- But this is just closing the street. It ain't gonna hurt, it ain't gonna hurt your life.
Oh, okay.
This is just closing the street.
State your, state your-
We make, make a motion to, uh, close the street from six thirty Friday night to six thir-
Ten, ten.
And Friday at, uh, October fifth.
Any discussion? Ask for a second.
All through that. I need to wrap that up.
Barnes?
Barnes?
Barnes? Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thank you for elaborating on that. This brings us down to annexational discussion. Tim and Chad have been working on this, uh, natural state, and they're, they're gonna come in tonight. They're interested in it being annexed into the city limits. We got to looking at it closer, uh, at the thought we might just create it an enclave, which you can't do, or can't have in that. So in the process of ironing out the wrinkles on that, I want to talk to the landowners that it'll create. I've already talked to one, and I don't think I'm getting much, I haven't sat down and discussed it. I think they're gonna be fine with it. But it's a process, and I'll let Chad elaborate on that a little bit. But, uh, for next month, we'll probably try to come in and, and have that, have that before you.
So, so there's been a, there's been a request from a landowner kind of on the south edge of the town. The area that's kind of across from the Christian Center, Choctaw Acres, my old, my old house.
I wonder, Jason's great.
Uh, yeah, yeah, down that area. I think it's about, is it around thirty acres, forty acres?
Forty.
Forty acres to, to annex in. I actually learned a lot about our city limits in the process of doing it, cause I, I made some assumptions when I first saw it. Apparently, you know, we had, they're somewhat a snake-like area of unincorporated property. And by taking this property in, which again, I, I would have assumed it just would have been one thing it left out, it wouldn't have been a big deal, that actually closes off, and it closes off because it connects with some property that's in the city limits that is across the highway, and it cuts off several pieces of property north of that that are unincorporated. They're all, they're all east of Highway sixty-five, and they're not resi- I don't believe any of them are being used for residential purposes. So I don't, I don't think they are, so, uh, so those areas would be cut off. It's very easy to annex in if you have a hundred percent, a hundred percent petition. It's, it's just, you just file a petition, process goes through the county judge, corn court, into the council. Uh, when you don't have a hundred percent, it gets a little more complicated. If you have majority, uh, if you have a majority of landowners that are, that want to annex in, there is a process to annex everyone into that. I don't know that everybody's ready to talk about that right now, but, but the issue is that you really can't have an enclave. You cannot, you cannot create areas within a, within a city that are unincorporated and totally surrounded by incorporated property. And I, and I asked municipal league, cause there's actually a little provision in the law that maybe makes it look like maybe you could, and the answer from municipal league is like, it kind of looks that way, but I wouldn't try it, so.
Yeah, and I, an old council member, a former one, said, you know, it's a good idea when you're annexing, just to open it up and you need to buy it, do it all at one time, cause some people, you know, want in. We're hoping that's-
An enclave is island.
It's an island inside, yeah.
Yeah, you look at a piece of property that is totally-
If you leave your property, you're gonna be in the city.
We have several islands, I think, on that end of town, too. Well, fully surrounded, though.
In twenty, in twenty twenty four, in twenty twenty four, we're not creating enclaves. So whatever might have been created in the past is in the past.
Yeah, my dad was an island for a long time, till he wasn't.
But there are a few.
The, the law has kind of changed, a lot of it's kind of going up to some of the stuff that happened up in northwest Arkansas over the last twenty years. And the, the law has kind of changed on that issue a little bit, and, um, but advice being municipal league is to avoid enclaves.
I just, my opinion is we have problem with a lot of areas that need to be shored up. Islands or, or enclaves or ones that's already done, and this and that. The fire department side loses a lot of ground because they get called to a fire, but it's not really in their district. But nobody else is gonna go there, and more than likely, probably most of them, the insurance companies think they're in the city limits, and they're getting an insurance rate that they're in the city limits.
I, I'll, I'll say, and I don't, I mean, I don't think there's anyone that did any of this stuff intentionally.
Oh, yeah.
But I think there are a lot of assumptions that have been made that some of this property was in the city limits, and it might already be getting some city services that, just based on that assumption, and that's something, uh, and I, you know, it, it just is what it is. It wasn't part of the project that we were looking at, and it's just sort of come up, and I don't want to go too far into that, but.
I just like to work on some way of what we gotta do to start trying to shore up some of them.
How much land are you talking? How much land are you talking, thirty, forty acres, is that what you said?
So it's forty acres that has been requ- that has been petitioned to annex in. And then if you look up north, the property that would be made into an enclave, I'm saying-
Thirty acres?
Nah, I'm saying a little more than that, maybe closer to, maybe fifty to eighty, if we put it all together. I haven't, I haven't seen a survey of it, it just, I think there are three affected landowners. I think three affected landowners.
And you can't force annexing, can you?
Well, that's-
It can be cost us, but it cost us.
That's, that's that majority process.
I don't know, Dick McCormick, yeah. Don Richardson, thank you, Don, no, but no.
I don't know, anybody's ready to talk about that. No one's asking me to look into force annexations, I want to be real clear about that. No one's asking me to look at force annexations right now, and so I haven't done that.
Initially, we just-
Don Richardson had to be the bearer of the news, that's all.
What's the zoning thoughts?
I think it's an industrial application that they're asking about.
What about those others, what would they be?
That, well, I, I'm assuming, I'm a, I'm assuming that would be highway commercial. Cause it's sixty-five highway commercial, they're not, they're not-
They're all on sixty-five highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Isn't that all zone commercial as of right now?
No, I mean, really, uh, Tim, we're here, probably be a better, be a more educational person than me on that. But not everything on Highway sixty-five is zone commercial. The zoning commission has kind of expressed an openness to making everything on Highway sixty-five commercial upon an owner's request. Whether there, I, I'd have to look at whether, if these particular property owners did not want to be commercial, commercially zoned, we'd have to look at, we'd have to look at that. I would assume just by the current use, they would want to be commercial, so.
There's no penalty for being commercial, they're paying more-
Typically, it's, it's, it's an improvement on the value of your property, so.
It's more on property taxes, right?
Might be, it might affect property taxes a little bit.
Yeah.
But I think, and that's, that's a question we need to look at, this issue popped up like a couple of days ago, that we had a problem, so.
You can live in, you can live in commercial, it's residential, but you can't have commercial and residential.
Anything else on that? Yeah, I know when Tim gets back, we're in the process to do that, I'll wait to get, contact the property owners, I'm familiar with most of them, I think. Okay, that's all on that, appreciate anything else on that. Brings us down to public comments, anybody? I was gonna put Richard Hillis here, we got one in there earlier. I, I have a couple that I, I'd sent you some informational things, we had, we're late getting the agenda out. Chad been busy, busy, busy. One was next month, maybe look at two hour parking for downtown, that's been brought up, and things that have been kind of swirling around, same way we want to talk about. You know, if you're getting, you know, like downtown Conway, you know, you can't say this is for city hall parking only or whatever, they just solved it by two hour parking, you can, you know, address that and maybe next council meeting.
You talking about parking meters?
I think really just a sign that just, and make the paint, paint.
Then what do you do if somebody goes down there for football Saturday and watches a four hour football game?
Yeah.
Well.
Kenneth Keaton in the same car.
The same, well, I think, I think two hour parking basically takes care of that problem, and I think, I think they can move their car somewhere else, something like that. But the problem that's, the problem that's coming up though is more someone parking all day, because.
They work there or something, and they just park there, so, in the front door.
What about when they have court downtown, I know they.
It gets pretty.
Always full downtown.
Well, I'll say Van Buren County courthouse is the most welcoming parking courthouse in the state of Arkansas, and I've been to a lot of them, usually I've got to park pretty far away when I go out of town, so.
Well, you do it Conway, and you gotta pay a traffic ticket.
I'm just saying that it's always full. And you can hardly get around the court square.
I, I know one person that operates a salon on the square really well, and she's very gracious, but it's not always easy for some of her clients that come in and have their hair done.
Handrail, drop down the fellow from the call, handrails and Charles is, I guess, gone, but that's something we've been talking around too, and that's something I definitely want to come back and address next month. Find the money to put, put some in. You get them to city hall, get anywhere, it's a big step up.
Parking on the court square, what do they do on the court, does it park somewhere farther away, or?
Yeah.
They're gonna be in there a while?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it's just, so, that's just, I mean, we're talking about this court square itself, there's a, there's an entire parking spot over there, you know, what is that, south, south of the region?
There's a lot of stuff straight up.
There's plenty of parking there.
I want to discuss all these things that we've been talking around. The other thing that I didn't put down was relooking at the ten percent tax on alcohol sales, and I'm sure y'all have an opinion on that, just bring that up now, this meeting, and if it's, if somebody wants to think about lowering it. I put, I think on your information, ten percent to two and a half percent, I just, I probably shouldn't have put a number.
Why would we lower the alcohol tax if we won't lower the property tax, is my question.
There's a huge difference in amount of money between those.
I thought that would come up, yeah. Nobody cares whether you pay ten percent behind the, behind the drinks.
Right.
They're gonna drink, you're gonna drink. Well, it makes it easy on the business end, but like I say, the more restaurants you get.
Not really, the business owner just charges the tax to the customer. If I'm gonna sit down and drink a six dollar beer, I don't care to pay sixty cents tax on it.
If you're gonna win, and you're gonna get a bill, and you're gonna get a drink, that's what you're gonna do.
Yeah, and that, and that's kind of on my end, so I'd be happy to prepare an ordinance for the council to consider, if you want me to prepare an ordinance, but if it's gonna die for lack of a second, I'd rather not.
Somebody, yeah, I just brought that up.
We brought it up a couple of years ago anyway, and it didn't ever go anywhere.
The revenue's increased on it, hasn't it, Dana, I mean?
Yeah, because we have more restaurants.
Looked at last month, I think.
Now, and if Tim was here, Jeff was here, they were at the zoning meeting the other night, they were making statements about they'd looked at their tickets, and they, one, this one guy, he had been to Hogs and Heifers, and his ticket had ten percent tax there, they went to the Mexican restaurant and only had six percent tax. So, somehow, before we do any lowering, we need to figure out how we're gonna make them all do the same thing.
Enforce all of it.
We need to get them to do it right now, we gotta make them sure they're paying.
If they're, if they're all just choosing what they want to pay right now, it ain't gonna do us no good to write an ordinance.
So, if someone has a receipt that's shown a different rate, they'd bring that to my office, I'll look.
I'll go get one right now.
I didn't know, I didn't even know who they would take it to.
We already know, yeah, we better see how.
Well, we can, we've got an enforcement mechanism, so we can look at it.
Well, here's the deal, they bring me their state tax, or what they send to the state for their taxes, and whatever it shows on their mixed drinks or whatever, they pay ten percent to the state, they also pay a four percent mixed tax, or mixed drink tax. They pay me ten percent of what they say that they, so, they may be taking the loss. But they do have ten percent, but I'm not saying, you know, I don't know if theirs is all correct, but whatever the state has.
The state's different on mixed drinks and beer and wine, their taxes are different for those three things, for the state, yeah. But for us, it's ten percent across the board.
Exactly.
Okay. And that's one thing about alcohol sales, it actually should be pretty easy to reference it, because, because the records are kept with the state anyway, so.
If that's the case, then they're just taking a loss.
Richard asked me about that today, and I thought, obviously, they're taking a loss.
Speak up and say that, yeah, chief don't know for sure, but, but the actual ten percent we're getting, and as far as.
If we're getting the ten percent from them, if they're not charging their customers ten percent.
Well, that's fine if they want to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's on them, as long as, I mean, I just, you know, before we even start to talk about anything on the ordinance, we need to make sure we're, of course, if that's the case, then we are getting the, all the way across the board.
Yeah, we need to look at that, and it's not, I, I'm not sure if you're allowed to charge it that way also, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but it's raised a question for me, so.
Right.
Oh, you're not sure if it's legal for them to do that, that way?
I just don't know, I don't want to say one way or another, but I, I have certain understandings of what vendors are supposed to do, I'm not sure if that's correct or not.
I know a lot of businesses do, like me, I build sales tax into the price of some of my items, I just, that's what the price is up to. But I'm still paying it.
But if you're representing a different one, that's just an interesting question to me, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, but like those sales, you got a statement when you have to make some.
Yeah, I'm just not sure, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That's just stuff you're gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to look up and figure out.
But you're pretty sure they're paying, everybody's paying ten percent?
Oh, I know they're paying ten percent on whatever they say that they're sending to the state.
Okay. So, they say you separate, they don't go to the state and come back, somebody has to go. That was, yeah, Michael, no, it goes.
I mean, they pay the state ten percent on mixed drinks, and then they have an additional mixed drink tax, which is four percent. So, they're paying fourteen percent on that.
Wow. On mixed drinks.
It's on mixed drinks.
But it's cheaper on beer and wine, I think.
Is that all? I wouldn't know, I'd be milking water for my friends and church. Water only.
So, if there's a council member that wants to consider that issue, you'll let me know, I'll prepare an ordinance, but if there's not one, I'm not gonna prepare one.
I just wanted to bring that up, and I probably should have put an amount on there, I just did. Anything else on public comment? DL's ready, yeah.
I said, as a business owner, I would rather the property tax be reduced as the, because I pay the alcohol tax. I go to the restaurants and I drink beer, and I don't mind paying it, but it grabs my ass to pay property tax. I'll just tell you that, I'm proud.
Yeah, I, I, he's made that point, Jeff is, yeah. I think one of your most famous sayings have come off this discussion, what we're talking about now. Wow, okay, no, that's a good way to end public comment, mayor's comments, Saturday, fourteenth, don't forget the Van Buren County firefighter expo down City Park with the dog, you know, Rita and crew, those girls are the best. So, go down there if you think you need a pet, there's some good ones running around there, get one. And tomorrow is the archery, state's putting on, so, that's the thirteenth. Ravaco, the tricycle motorcycle riders are coming through Clinton next Friday. They're going to come down to the park, we're gonna give them a little light lunch, and it's, they're a national group, they'll be in a magazine, be some pretty good promotion for the city of Clinton. A and B, I think, helped feeding them on that, just a little light sit down, and then they're gonna go over to the pottery shop, and all of them get their picture made by the Ozark sign, spend a little time and money there, may try to run them out to the Oafs and show them where the national championship chuck wagon races are, and I think they're gonna end up back at Crappy Jack's they've talked about. So, they're gonna spend a little time in Clinton, be in a magazine, I think the guys that's bringing us, bringing them up here is Charles O'Dell, he's the guy that we got our mowers from, ain't got a bad one yet, he's involved in that, and he's responsible, they're going to five or six different towns on different days, staying over at Mountain View, but they're gonna end up in Clinton, and so that's good, we're, we'd be glad to have them, so look for them. Also, next Tuesday, the seventeenth, there's gonna be a Know Your Government at the library, the Van Buren County Library, Marge Leclair's group, first speaker on six o'clock will be Dale James, talking about his job and what the constitution says his duties are. And the next week, they've got Chris Madison, he's the state director of elections, so that's, that'll be a good, good speaker. And then, I think October the first, they're probably stuck with me unless they can get somebody better, but just keep that in mind. That's every Tuesday at the library starting next, next week, starting the seventeenth, six o'clock, Know Your Government. Election security meeting, they're still trying to set that from the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth of this month. I don't think they had that set, and they're still kind of, trying to figure out the best day for that. Performance services, I've got a group coming in, I think next Thursday, the nineteenth. We're gonna try to look at our lights, if, you know, where do we need lights, the dead spots in town, this is a group that, municipal leagues, so far it's at no charge of the city, but they're, they can help you with their lighting, of course, they want the contract to put them in, then they can offer proposals, so anybody that wants to be there, meet these guys for that. Same time, at six o'clock over at Fairfield Bay is that moonshine, I know Tim and I'll be there. They're gonna have that, the meeting about getting ready for the moonshine festival on November the first over at the fairgrounds, you gotta watch there.
What, they're having the meeting at Fairfield Bay?
Yeah, that's their headquarters, but yeah, that's where they, they're gonna, Wilbon Hergr, they spoke at Rotary Wednesday, and we talked about that, got some, our parking for the, it's gonna pretty much remain the same. Appreciate David Hess and all those other folks, the help with the parking out there for the Van Buren County Fair. I think that was successful, Don really did a good job, so, hoping that inside festival, Lone Star will be there, so that's a pretty, pretty big name. Also, thanks for Chuck Wagon, everybody that helped on that, all the churches, of course, and, you know, Steve Good and the whole, the whole crew, and especially the city, and glad we got, I think, the tip jar from, from the feed was north of forty-three hundred dollars, so that'll go to the senior citizens center a hundred percent, and I'll talk to each one of them, see what their needs are. But we usually kind of divide it up with Shirley and Scotland, and of course, I know Clinton will need it for sure. That's all I've got, I give somebody the last word, or entertain a motion second.
We've got that VAS tournament on October nineteenth.
That's coming when?
October nineteenth.
Okay, yeah, that.
And it's the big.
Yeah, it's, it's a quad state, I've got a printout of this that I gave, I'll give to everybody, upcoming events for Clinton. Yeah, nineteenth is the Chamber After Hours, I think that's downtown. Ravaco, the twentieth, and the quad state is coming up in October, we have another meeting before then. And then stakeouts, October the twelfth, I think that's, or maybe we meet on the tenth, whatever it is, but that's a big fundraiser for football team, and Steve Good's big, big helping there. So, a lot, lot going on, a lot going on, lost, a lot of, you know, always, people passing, black family, hearts got them. Phil Bradley, he used to live here, always cut your hair, Phil Bradley and Ronnie Wofford, Phil passed away, and I think his service is Sunday, it's coming Sunday, at the Kingdom Hall, great guy, great family, so. Anyway, appreciate everybody, entertain a motion second to adjourn.
Mike, walk from way adjourn.
Stand next second.
We stand adjourned, thank you.